One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
At this time, I'd like to ask our Commission Secretary Andy Smith to please call the roll.
Commissioner Reiser?
Here.
Commissioner Needing?
Here.
Commissioner Anderson?
Here.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Here.
Chair Ward?
Here.
And Commissioners Lezak and Pickett are absent tonight, but we do have a quorum with five.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the consent calendar, and I believe we do not have anything on the consent calendar.
That is correct.
Okay. Excellent. That brings us to the public communications portion of the agenda. This portion in the meeting is reserved for comment on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the Commission cannot act on items raised during public communications, but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Do we have any members of the public in the chamber or online who wish to speak?
Well, we're waiting to see if anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on public communication. I'll note there are some members online. If they would, if they wish to speak, please press the raise hand button. And nobody's doing that.
Okay, great. And seeing no public communications, we will move on to item four, which is public hearings. Let's start by asking if any member of the Commission has had any ex-party communications relating to items on this evening's agenda. Anybody? All right, thank you. So our first and only item, public hearing item, is the residence at Abigail Place subdivision final design review application, and it is an appeal of the Design Review Commission's decision on April 19th, 2023, denying the final design review for the development in question. Okay, so first, I think we're going to have a staff presentation, correct?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners. I'm Erica Van den Brand, the Community Development Director here at the City of Walnut Creek. In a moment, Simmer Gill, the planner for the residences at Abigail Place project, will provide a brief presentation summarizing the appeal. It is unfortunate that we need to come before you tonight to finalize the city's action on this project because the facts of the project and the law governing housing development in the state of California are clear. Moreover, this information was included in the staff report that was provided to the Planning Commission when you approved the project on February 23rd of this year, to the Design Review Commission, and again for you all tonight. In addition, we have met with representatives of the state's Housing and Community Development Housing Accountability Unit who are attentive to this matter. Trust in government entails having clear processes in place and following those processes regardless of a personal opinion. Not approving the project this evening has the potential to subject the city to legal liability as well as invite regulatory oversight. To be fully transparent, the costs of this appeal are being covered by the city and the project and not by the project applicant. I want to be unequivocal in stating that the city understands the facts, understands the law, and we follow the law. I would now like to introduce Simmer Gill to give a presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Let me just load the presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Simmer Gill, Associate Planner with the City of Walnut Creek, and we are here tonight to consider an appeal that was filed by Andy Byde, the developer, regarding DRC's decision which denied the final design review for the 17 new homes at 730 and 748 Minor Road. As you may recall, this project came before this commission on February 23rd of 2023 for a subdivision map and also for density bonus approval. And I will reintroduce the project and go over the project details related to the appeal. And just to quickly orient us with the site, the three lots that total two acres in size will be merged for this development. The existing site contains two homes that will be demolished to make way for the 17 new homes, and the surrounding area consists of single-family homes that are all zoned residential, R10 zone. And just a quick summary of the project. The applicant is proposing 17 new two-story homes. One of the homes will be an affordable unit dedicated to a low-income household. This project is being processed under the Housing Accountability Act, which requires the project to be in compliance with the city's objective design standards, and the project also includes a density bonus. And just a little background, on February 23rd of 2023, the Planning Commission approved the subdivision map, creating the 17 new lots. The Planning Commission also approved the tree removals, 16 waivers to the city's development standards, and one concession to utilize gross acreage versus net acreage to establish the base density under state's density bonus law. Then this project went to the Design Review Commission for a final design review of the architecture and landscaping for each lot. And Design Review Commission's purview was to review the architecture, the landscaping, and the materials palette for the project as part of the final design review. All of the other entitlements that were associated with this project were already reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. The DRC chose to deny the final design review citing the project as too dense and that it resulted in a tight site layout. However, DRC did not base their denial on the required health and safety findings under state law. Therefore, the developer is now appealing the Design Review Commission's decision. And so why are we here tonight? Per the Walnut Creek Muti Code, the Planning Commission will consider this appeal of the Design Review Commission's prior decision that denied the project. The Planning Commission may choose to reverse or modify the Design Review Commission's decision. The Planning Commission's action will be final, and no further appeals may be filed on this application. And as mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission approved the subdivision map, the density bonus, and the waivers and the concession associated with the project. And those findings for approval are outlined in the adopted resolution included as Attachment 7 of your packet tonight. This prior approval established the configuration of the new lots and also approved the reduction to the city's development standards. So these items are not under consideration as part of this appeal tonight. Staff is recommending approval of the design review for this project. And this project is being processed under the Housing Accountability Act, also known as SB 330, which dictates that a city cannot deny or lower the density of a housing project that complies with all of the city's objective development standards unless it's found that the project would have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. Please note, the Housing Accountability Act defines the term "objective" to mean involves no personal opinion or subjective judgment by a public official. Staff reviewed the project against all of the city's objective land use standards, the subdivision requirements, the zoning ordinance, as well as the design standards, which is included as Attachment 5. And the city has found that the project is in compliance and therefore covered by the HAA. So given all of that context, I will quickly summarize how this project meets the objective standards and how it complies with the regulations set by the city. The project is providing residential development in an existing residential neighborhood. Therefore, it remains consistent with the development patterns in the area. The project plans were evaluated by staff and shared with all of the external agencies, Contra Costa Fire District and the Sanitary District being some of the key ones, as well as other divisions within the city such as Building, Public Works, and the Traffic Engineering Department to ensure that there would be no traffic concerns. And the project and site layout complies with their standards and the applicable health and safety requirements. Contra Costa County Fire did confirm that the project complies with the Fire District's emergency access and turnaround requirements, and that letter from the Fire District is included as Attachment 6 of your packet tonight. Also, the city's Building Division also confirmed that the project complies with the applicable building code requirements, which among other things does require that each home have a minimum three-foot building setback. Emergency egress windows are provided in each bedroom, and fire sprinklers are provided in each home. The plans were designed to meet all of these requirements, and these agencies did not express any concerns with the distance between the homes. And finally, the architecture and landscaping was designed to comply with the objective design standards for single-family homes as outlined in the city's attached checklist. And under the Housing Accountability Act, a decision to deny or reduce the density of a project that complies with the applicable objective general plan, zoning, subdivision standards, and design standards must be based on written findings that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety and that there is no other feasible method to mitigate or avoid that impact. City staff previously evaluated this project and did confirm that the development complies with the city's objective design standards. Therefore, the project cannot be denied or conditioned without making these required findings. The DRC did fail to make any written findings based upon objective policies and did not identify any public or safety standards as listed on this slide when denying this project. And in summary, the project complies with applicable objective standards and regulations set by the city. The project addresses the issues the Design Review Commission raised. The draft resolution before you tonight outlines the design review findings, and the Planning Commission February 23rd, 2023 approved resolution and the findings reflect all of these points. So based on all of these findings, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution granting the appeal and approving the final design review of the project subject to the conditions of approval in the resolution. And for the record, staff did receive five letters of opposition, one petition letter that was signed by 11 neighbors citing concerns with the density, the removal of trees, and also raised fire safety and traffic concerns related to this project. Staff also received one letter of, two letters of support for this project, and a copy of these letters have been provided to each of you tonight, and additional copies have been provided for the public as well. And the developer Andy Byde and his team are here tonight and would like the opportunity to address this commission. And with that, I do conclude my portion of the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. That was excellent. Do we have any Commissioner questions right now? Commissioner Anderson?
Just a couple. The zoning in that area that allows two-story homes?
That is correct. The residential zone allows two-story and single-story homes.
And the setbacks, the three-foot setbacks, is that, is that standard? And the setbacks, the three-foot setbacks, is that standard for the area? Is that one of the changes that was made because of the Housing Accountability Act?
Correct. That was a waiver that was requested by the developer. A minimum five-foot setback is required in the R-10 zone.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, I have a couple of things I was hoping to clarify. There was a concern with regard to children walking to school, and my understanding is that children do walk to school down the street now, and that there are no sidewalks and, in fact, a bulb out, but that would be mitigated by this project and some sidewalks installed. Is that correct?
That is correct. There's currently no sidewalks, and the project would be installing sidewalks along Minor.
So it'd actually be a lot safer along Minor?
Correct. It's improving the current situation.
All right. The other question I had is with regard to how we calculate traffic. So it's not a matter of trying to figure out how many cars each unit has in the development. It's based on a formula that a traffic study concludes.
Correct. The city's traffic engineer did review this project and confirm that it meets a screening criteria of a small project. The characteristics of a small project, so it's less than 20 units, results in a less than significant impact. And we do have the traffic engineer here tonight, Madara Boardman, if you wish to have her elaborate on that question.
But we're not here to reconsider traffic or density. So I just wanted to clarify that point with regard to some concerns that have been raised. Okay. I don't think I have any questions. If no one else has thought of anything, thank you very much. Let's now open the public hearing portion of this event, and if the applicant would like to come up and speak to us, we would be happy to hear what you have to say.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Andy Byde, and as Simmer mentioned, I'm with Caliber Ventures, partner with Caliber Ventures. We're a private home builder developer located in the East Bay, and we focus on infill sites and properties that we've, you know, in great communities. And we're, you know, we've certainly been proud to be in Walnut Creek, and it's a place we'd love to come back and do other projects. You know, I've been probably before this commission, probably eight or so times in front of the Design Review Commission, probably 20, and received, you know, two Action for Beauty Awards on projects I've worked on in the past. I'm not, I'm going to try and not repeat the excellent job that Simmer did on some of the facts. I kind of wanted to give you the perspective from kind of the developer and some of the dollars expended, as well as, and then I'll have my attorney, Brian Winter, kind of go through the legal background. But about little over two years ago, kind of in the early spring of during the COVID lockdowns, we had the opportunity to be introduced to the property owners, the Cox family and the Royal family. We ultimately spent some time working on a deal that ultimately met their needs, and they each had two different needs, and ultimately executed that property, that project. Since that time, I would suspect we've probably spent in excess of $300 or so thousand coming up with project plans, engineers. We engaged about seven or eight consultants, including civil engineers, hydrologists, biologists, acoustical experts, geotechnical engineers, arborists, et cetera, to kind of come up with the design. In addition to that, we, you know, we engaged counsel in order to guide us kind of through this fairly complex process, which, you know, in all fairness, I think to the community and also to staff is a fairly new process. And I've been doing this, I've been in land use planning since, embarrassed to say, since the mid-'90s, which, in all fairness, the state has completely changed the landscape. And so it's kind of a new world for everybody. We, during the processing time, we came up with seven different iterations, responding to comments from city staff, city engineering staff, responding to each comment. So we went through that process over the course of about 14 to 16 months, seven different times, and ultimately came up with a project that's ultimately, was ultimately before your commission back in February and is ultimately in front of you tonight on appeal. Despite obviously some of the concerns, given the density, it's certainly different than what is out there in the neighborhood. You know, we felt like it was a well-designed project. We've spent a lot of time making sure the materials were high quality, making sure the architecture was top quality, making, you know, working with our landscape architects, respond to some of the concerns from the Design Review Commission, as well as come up with something that ultimately we're going to be proud of. It's functional. It's got two, you know, two-car garages for each unit, a third, a little over a third of the units have full-length driveways. Certainly, it's a denser project than what is out there and what folks are used to. At the same time, I would submit, given the housing situation that we all face now and the state has actually declared an emergency regarding housing, this is a fairly soft approach than what could happen. Other communities are being dealt with through the housing element, much, much denser solutions to the problem of housing than this. And one thing I certainly don't want to be remiss about, and it certainly gets lost, I think, into a certain extent in these conversations, is that this project will have a standalone unit for a family that meets the very low-income category. So that's a very low-income unit that, you know, in, I've been doing housing for many years, to provide with no public subsidy, a very low homeownership unit in a brand-new community almost never happens. And so, you know, that subsidy from us is well in excess of a million dollars, and we're proud of it, and we think it complements the project. Granted, yes, there's been, folks have said, hey, you could do more. We can always do more, but it's, I think it's an important component not to lose sight of. Obviously, part of our, you know, part of what's here tonight and why we're here tonight is, you know, my opinion of the failure of the Design Review Commission to do what it was tasked to do. The commission had a fairly simple job, and that is to evaluate the color, the materials, and the landscape palette. Ultimately, it chose to make a politically expedient statement in front of the neighbors to articulate their frustration with state law and denied our project. One of the frustrating things for me is, you know, we've probably, I don't know exact dollars, tens of thousands of dollars that we've spent for city fees, for city, not fees, excuse me, there's city, not impact fees, but processing fees. And the commission, who, again, I've been before this commission in excess of 20 times, so I understand how they work, they didn't have the decency to even offer findings for denial, which I felt as outrageous as somebody who spends tens of thousands of dollars to fund this process. The commission didn't even have the ability to look our team in the eye and say, this is why we're denying it. Now, granted, I think as the staff has pointed out, and Brian Winter's going to point out, it would have been impossible for them to do that. There was no way they could have made findings remotely consistent with state law, but they couldn't even do something in the context of their own beliefs, which I found reprehensible personally. So I'm going to bring Brian up in a moment, but I did want to just say one thing. As frustrated we are that we're here, you know, your city staff, as I know you know, is some of the best, and I work in all kinds of different communities all over the Bay Area, and they've done a great job. They do not, I think, as some folks have accused the staff of working hand-in-glove with the developer, that is absolutely not what they do. They push back very hard on a lot of pieces, ultimately came up with the project that's before us. But they, but they're professional, and they're knowledgeable, and I'm, as a resident, I'm very thankful that the city has such a great staff. Also wanted to acknowledge that the city also refunded our appeal fee, which I'm also very grateful for, that was something that was not required. But obviously, I think it speaks to the injustice that the Design Review Commission committed on that project. And with that, I can, I'm going to have Brian kind of go over the law.
Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Ward and members of the commission. I'm Brian Winter. Pardon me, I have a cold, not COVID, so I may, I may struggle through this. But I'm with Miller Star Regalia, Land Use Counsel on behalf of the applicant. I wanted to also acknowledge staff. Staff has done a great job in connection with this project in explaining the legal context in which it resides and the severe limitations that the city has in its actions in connection with the project as a result of state law. I know Walnut Creek also has a long pro-housing tradition. I've worked in this city for 20-some years, and the city's reputation for pro-housing, I think, is unimpeachable and much, much, much better than many other communities that I can think of. So it's unfortunate that the Design Review Commission elected to put, to run the risk of putting the city in the spotlight even more for its failure to follow the law. I wanted to amplify the law just a little bit to make a few additional points. In addition to the specific adverse impact, public health and safety findings that the HAA requires be made in order for an agency to lawfully disapprove a housing development project, the statute defines specific adverse impact to mean something that's significant, direct, quantifiable, and unavoidable based on a written standard that's in effect as of the date the project application is deemed complete. There is no such document in existence against which those findings could be made, and every one of those findings would need to be made. So there's no possible way for the Design Review Commission to have lawfully been able to make findings, and they didn't even try, but those findings couldn't be made. The same findings exist under the density bonus law, but the findings couldn't be made, and the Designer Review Commission didn't even try. So we're here because the DRC rejected staff's advice, they refused to comply with the law, and they wanted to make a point about this project. But that comes at potential legal and political cost to the city, and again, I think the city is going a long way to fix that and stop this in its tracks. I will acknowledge also, as our letter sets forth, that the commission took an additional risk in that the Housing Accountability Act provides that the failure to comply with the timelines in the Permit Streamlining Act are themselves a disapproval of a housing development project. And here, those timelines run from the time that the sequel determination was made by this commission on the project on February 23rd. There was a 60-day period from that point for all possible hearings, including appeal hearings, to be conducted by the city, but the DRC's decision to vote no on the project occurred at the 55th day. So by the time we could file an appeal and get to this hearing date, a disapproval had already occurred. So we chose to appeal anyway, even though we didn't have to. We thought that was the right thing to do, and we believe that you will correct the mistakes of your fellow commission. So I hope the answer is clear. I think the commission must approve the project. There is not a choice. I also hope that you'll find that this is the easiest decision you'll ever have to make. The HAA is intended to be cover for public agencies to deal with project opposition for whatever the opposition, the rationale for the opposition might be. The HAA is meant to be a shield to say yes to projects just like this. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Do any Commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Your attorney, come back, please.
Vice Chair Strongman, your mic is off.
Off, I'm sorry. Could you clarify, we are right now at the 60-day, and the implications, this should have happened 10 days ago, is that correct?
Ideally, yes.
Ideally. What would be the consequences if we decided to take a vacation right now?
Well, you, there's nowhere to go, because this is the, this is the final appeal body of DRC action, so it can't go to the council, unfortunately. The council can't back clean up here. So if the commission decided to punt, it would, I'm saying this in an explanatory way, not in a threatening way, but it would leave my client no choice but to pursue litigation over this. And the HAA establishes severe consequences for that, including the agency's paying for its own attorney's fees, paying for my client's attorney's fees, and doing so under the privilege of a court order directing the city to comply with the law. So that's, I mean, that's where it would.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Do we have any other questions from Commissioners for the applicant? Commissioner kneeling, sorry.
Kneeling.
Kneeling. I apologize.
I also wanted to clarify another thing from Counsel Winter. And it goes, did Attorney General Bonta create a task force specifically to uphold the Housing Accountability Act recently? I think it was last year.
There's a task force, NHCD also has a housing enforcement unit, so there's multiple branches of government that are tasked with looking at egregious actions by cities that warrant their involvement. I don't think that's where we're at here, and I don't think that's where we will be.
Right.
Yes, that's correct.
Just, I, but it was, I do recall that that, as it pertains to the HAA, that was something that was given power to NHCD to enforce recently.
That's correct. But in addition, the AG can be brought in for its own enforcement efforts. Yeah.
It was, it aligns with what our Commissioner was saying. I just wanted to clarify the power of.
Yeah, there's multiple tools. Yeah, it is a housing production statute.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other, any other questions?
I think that's it. You're safe to sit down, at least briefly. All right. So moving on to public comment, now is the time for members of the public to make comments. We're adhering to a three-minute time limit, and I believe we have comment cards for those who are in the chamber, and the secretary will let people in from Zoom if they are there.
Yes, and as per typical procedure, we would hear from people in the chamber first, and then I would ask anybody who is on Zoom who wishes to speak on this item, feel free to go ahead and hit the raise hand button. That'll let me know to let you in when we get to that portion of the public comment period.
Okay. I don't see anybody in the chambers who wishes to make a comment at this time. Okay.
If the chair so wishes, I do have in hand three speaker cards. Well, actually, I have six speaker cards, but I believe three of them are on this item, but I've got, let's see, Rob Higby, Max Ranjabar, Linda Holland, Jody Donnelly, Michael Cohn, and Samar Correo.
Call the first person, too.
Okay. I'll go ahead and Linda Holland happens to be on the top of the stack here.
Good evening. We, the homeowners, are having our constitutional and Fourth Amendment right to privacy in our home taken away. As our Walnut Creek Planning Commission, you can't just stand by and have the builders arbitrarily do this under false pretense. There are significant and serious problems with this build. This plan is too big, too tight for the lot, bad home placement, no open, safe space for kids to play, a significant polluter, and a fire trap. Because of the proximity of the houses, if one house catches on fire, it will surely spread to the others and potentially catch our trees on fire and spread to our homes. This is a health and safety issue. Fire spreads quickly. The closer the houses, the faster it will spread. This is one reason why we have made the argument to eliminate several of the houses to provide more separation between each one. The Planning Commission gave the builder the go-ahead before all this information was known. Now that we know the risks and significant dangers associated with this plan, the Planning Commission has the responsibility to mitigate this project or scrap it. We heard the Design Committee Commission and Planning Commission telling us that their power to make right judgment and decisions for Walnut Creek had been taken away by Bill SB 330 and encouraged us to go to Sacramento and meet our representative. So my husband and I did just that. This past Tuesday, we met with Senator Steve Glaciers, district representatives, and spoke to them in depth regarding this project. This is what we learned. You are not a powerless planning commission. They told us that you have the discretion and responsibility to modify and mitigate this project, this proposed project, based on safety and health concerns, among other concerns. Do not allow SB 330 to take over the ability to make the right decision. Don't you agree? Do not be intimidated by the threats from the builders of a lawsuit. Remember, the builder will leave. We, the citizens and taxpayers of Walnut Creek, are here to stay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Andy, who's up next?
I apologize if I'm misreading this, Max Ranjabar.
Yes, hi. My name is Max Ranjabar, and there at 2330 La Salle Drive in Walnut Creek. One homeowner after the other came to this podium and expressed their opposition and frustration. frustration with this project in terms of safety, public safety, and public health, privacy. And then the consensus between all the homeowners is that this Planning Commission did not hear them. I share that thought, that you guys have not. The last session that you passed this plan, then it was so fast, but so quick, that honestly, this question came to many homeowners, including me. Are this panel and City of Walnut Creek are independent with respect to this project? Independent defined as if any personal, family, business, association, partnership, or any connection that really indeed influenced your decision in passing of this project. And also, when I go reading all the material, the attorney of the applicant has been expressed, I would read that they wanted to actually, to be as significant, all these safety and health issues, be of a significant, quantifiable, and adverse direct impact on the public safety. So I prepared my notes based on public safety, based on public health, and also the privacy. And in terms of public safety, as we know that these walls that have been built between our line of border, I mean homeowner's owner, and the home between one another is very small. I am completely familiar with homeowner association. The number one problem the homeowner association they have is the smell of the drug and the smoke they have, because the distance is so much that everybody would go and fight among themselves that their children's health would be in danger. And so this issue, this closeness of the wall and fire hazard is really real. The applicant attorney says this is a hypothetical assumption. Fire, we all know, the fire hazard happen every day in every city, every county throughout California, the whole nation, the country, and beyond. So this is real, the real issue. It's not a phony and hypothetical. It's happening, and it happens in the fire that we had, in those. But I'm sorry that I have lots of things to say.
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir. Thank you.
But I want you to consider and pay attention to what we say.
We've read everything that has been submitted.
I understand that. But I want to mention to you...
Your time is up now. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
For the speaker.
Oh, we actually have a question from commissioners to you, Max, if you wouldn't mind stepping back to the podium. There's a question from one of our commissioners. Thank you.
Do you have some specific reason for asking whether each of us has some personal connection to this development?
Well, the passing is so quickly. It was passed, it never ever gave any weight to what we are saying. We are saying that this is a public health. Nobody listens to that. We said this is a public issue in terms of fire and other things, privacy.
So you have no specific reason for questioning our independence?
Well, no, actually, it's a matter of procedure. In our company, if, if anybody want to take on a new client, then we have to declare whether we are independent with respect to that business. And I'm wondering, if actually, I was this question to Samar, that is it procedure for not only the City of Walnut Creek, but also the Planning Commission? That anybody at the beginning of voting on these projects have recused himself? And if they have recused himself, are they really documented? Because everybody, I'm wondering what this your procedure is, but I think when you make a decision on such a life and death issue in our neighborhood, and you guys, not clear to us whether you guys are independent or not, or that any factor can influence your decision?
Yeah, you know, without going down a rabbit hole, I would put on the record that, you know, all commissioners are governed by state law, and there are very specific state laws governing ethics and conflicts of interest, namely the Political Reform Act. Commissioners routinely recuse themselves if they do have a conflict, and no conflict exists here in this instance. So there is state law, and there is a procedure for all council members, commissioners, city officials to recuse themselves when there is a conflict of interest. And that has not happened here, because under those statutes and laws, there is no conflict. So I would say that the folks sitting at the dais tonight do not have a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you for mentioning that. But if there is anybody have recused themselves based on your knowledge and documentation?
No one recused themselves.
Correct.
Okay, next up?
Next speaker card I have is for Rob, I'm sorry, Rob Higbee.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rob Higbee. My wife and I live at 2323 La Salle Drive. We're 25-year residents of Walnut Creek. Her family's been here for 50 years. I have a financial planning practice in Walnut Creek. I'm a past chairman of the Board of Directors of the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce. I'm also a retired colonel in the United States Marine Corps with 30 years of operational experience. I love this city, and I'm disgusted at what this developer is trying to force down our throats. Ironically, the last time I was in front of this panel 20 years ago, I was fighting against the Planning Department in what I saw as unreasonable restrictions on our desire to renovate a decrepit structure on our property. Fortunately, this panel used their discretion to overrule the Planning Department recommendation and let our project go forward. We, the neighbors, you know, affronting this abomination, are asking for this panel to use their discretion again, to halt this abomination of a development. No reasonable person would find this development acceptable if it was on the other side of their fence. If you allow this to go forth as is, you will have been party to setting a terrible precedent that could irreversibly change the character of this city and its neighborhoods for the worse. If you allow this project to go forward unchallenged, you will effectively neuter this panel's authority and reason for existence. Sometimes you have to fight battles you don't think you can win. Sometimes that willingness to fight battles brings out allies you didn't know you had, and ultimately leads you to winning the war. Or your willingness to fight forces a change in your opponent's behavior because they find the costs of fighting you too high. Some municipality has to be willing to be the first to engage in battle to force modifications to the laws that have led us here, and to curb the behavior of developers like this, clearly motivated by greed. If not Walnut Creek, who? If not now, when? We don't have any more time. If our city attorney, who I suspect is not a resident of Walnut Creek, and who's not really a full-time employee of the city, and appears from his website to represent multiple entities, to include private developers, is not up to this fight, I suggest there are attorneys in Walnut Creek who are residents here who would relish such a fight. Please, do the right thing on behalf of the citizens of Walnut Creek. Deny this project as is until some remotely reasonable plan is put forth. If he sues, tell him we'll see him in court.
Thank you for your comments. Andy, who do we have next?
Next speaker card I have is for Jody Donnelly.
We're here for different subjects.
Okay, there's no other subjects that there will be public comment on at this point. We had open public comment earlier in the meeting, and that time has passed. So maybe in the next meeting, if you're here for another purpose. All right. Andy, do we have somebody else?
Also, Michael Cohn.
I was here to speak with...
Okay, and Samar Correo.
Yeah, for different topics.
Okay. It does sound like there's another person in the audience who wishes to speak just hasn't filled out a card, but certainly...
Okay, if you could come forward, sir, please. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Everett Haberman. I live at 2375 La Salle Drive. And I, first of all, want to thank you for hearing this and listening to us. I appreciate that. I've been a resident of Walnut Creek for over 49 years. We've come here a couple, three times in the past over the last five decades, and I've found this commission to be very, very supportive of reasonable efforts. I just want to make a couple of points in addition to what my colleagues did, and that is, a lot of these assumptions that we presented, and I've heard when I got here a bit late, but I heard at the earlier ones, are basically false assumptions that everybody just kind of nods their head to. And I would like to call your attention to just a couple of them. We could sit down, and it'd take much more than three minutes to go off. But the city objectives, it was proudly reported about an hour ago that the city objectives, the land use standards are being met. Well, all you have to do is look at one of your first documents that you published on this, which is dated September the 21st of 2022, the Design Review Commission. There are 16 major exceptions that you're proposing to make to this development. Not one, not two, not five, 16. And these are big concessions, like from lot size at minimum of 10,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet, to setbacks that go from 15 feet to four feet. You've got to be kidding me. I mean, these are major concessions. You don't have to rubber stamp these. Another one, it's not consistent with the neighborhood. There's nothing about this project that is consistent with my neighborhood, okay? From the exceptions you're making, just look at it. Has anybody gone out and actually looked at what they're proposing on this two-acre lot? We're going to put 17 houses? That's not going to work. We brought up the public health and safety issues. You won't be able, it's an immediate problem for the poor people that actually, if this thing goes through, by, because it's going to be one-way traffic in and out. And with 17 houses in there, we all know somebody's going to park in the way, and we're not going to be able to get to our house in the back. The density also is another major issue. The density is tremendously different than our neighborhood. You have scrupulously, over the last 50 years, not you, but your predecessors, maintained the 10,000 square feet, in some cases more than that, when people like myself have wanted to do things. And that's frustrating, but that leads to the quality of life that we enjoy in Walnut Creek, which I personally think is very important. And another thing, don't let anybody come up here and denigrate you guys. Your job is not easy. You've got a very easy job. The developer comes up and says, your job is really easy. You get to decide on colors and a lot of other, quite frankly, Mickey Mouse things. Your job is very, very important, and we're looking to you to support our basic desires and basic needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy, do we have anybody else either in chambers or on Zoom?
Yes, we do have one person on Zoom raising their hand. This is Barry, and I will let And while that is happening, I'll ask if the other attendees on Zoom, if they wish to speak, they should also press the raise hand button. And it looks like Barry is coming in here. If they want to go ahead and unmute themselves, and they can also turn on their camera if they so wish.
Oh, here it is. Okay, well, this is what I have to say. I think Mr. Haberman really was very reasonable with you folks, and pointed out that you don't have to rubber stamp this thing. The way you're saying it, you guys have no power whatsoever. And as Rob said, what is the point of your existence? If you don't have the right to turn down something like this that is so unreasonable, this is unreasonable.
It's obscene.
Well, my wife says it's obscene. I'm not going to argue with her. It's so unreasonable and so obscene, and you're saying, oh, our hands are tied. We can't do anything. So what do you exist for? What do you exist for? And that is what I'm going to end with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Andy, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak at this time?
It looks like none of the other attendees on Zoom are raising their hands, so that's all.
Okay, great. So last call for people in the chamber.
You're saying that the public comment, the people that turn in speaker cards for a different issue are not able to speak now, even though those cards were turned in at the time there was comment for those cards?
So we had general public comment for items not on the agenda earlier in the meeting, and nobody came forward or submitted a card at that time.
I do have speaker cards. Nobody, but as was announced by the chair, actually, I believe it was twice, and I also noted for attendees on Zoom, the opportunity to speak for public comment, and nobody approached the podium, as was directed.
So if we have time at the very end, it's possible that we can reopen public comment, but I want to see how long this is all going to take before we do that, because this meeting is taking a while as it is. So we want to give the agenda items their full due and make sure that we get everybody listening to. All right, this is not supposed to be an open question-answer period, but I'll entertain one more.
Just want to make the note that we are all here for the same subject.
Okay, thank you. All right. So Andy, just confirming, there's nobody else in the chamber who wants to speak on this agenda item, nor is there anybody on Zoom who has raised their hand?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. All right. So seeing no additional speakers, we're going to close. Oh, no. First, we're going to ask the applicant if they would like to respond to anything that any of the public speakers have said this evening.
Yeah, I'll just make some brief remarks. I think most of my responses really just want to focus on the item at hand, and that is really kind of the public health and safety issue. And I just, and I know that Simmer mentioned this in her staff report, but just kind of re-point this out. You know, the fire department has evaluated this project several times, and it found it consistent with its regulations for turnaround, for access, for hydrant placement, for home adjacency, and as well as the building department, which is also charged with life and safety issues, has evaluated this project. It's also consistent with building regulations. Projects of this density and much, much higher get built in Walnut Creek and cities throughout California every day. There is a, this is the allegations of health and safety regarding the adjacency of these new single-family homes is not founded and is not backed up by the experts who've reviewed it. So I just leave you with that.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Appreciated. All right. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for any comments, questions, or deliberation, possibly. Have any commissioner needing?
This is for staff, I think. My question is, there's a lot of concerns being brought up about fire. So I wanted to ask, is this project in a wildland-urban interface or a wooie? And the reason I ask that, so go ahead and answer that. I don't believe so.
I can answer that. No, it is not, and it's not in a fire hazard zone.
I did want to, and the reason I ask that is because fire is a very important consideration. And the California Residential Code actually implemented Code 337, and the purpose of it is to establish minimum standards for protection of life and property for fire considerations, vegetation, et cetera. So it's supposed to provide a systematic reduction in conflagration losses. So I did want to bring that up, that the city did, in fact, review, is it in a wooie? No. If it was, it would have then applied the objective standard for any fire consideration, which it sounds like they did. Correct. And then the other question I wanted to also ask is there was discussion about traffic, and it sounded like there was a traffic analysis. There's now, is that correct?
A detailed traffic analysis wasn't required, again, because this met the criteria of small project, and it was screened out.
For VMT.
For VMT.
Correct.
The traffic engineer, correct, they did review the plans and confirm that there would be no traffic additional, what's already beyond what's there now.
So...
It wouldn't increase the traffic.
Engineer did, in fact, see that it was compliant with Senate Bill 743, which dictates that traffic. I believe the tra- which dictates that traffic, I believe, the traffic, right?
I believe I'm gonna point to Smedar for that question.
Because those are the two things I'm, I'm hearing, is traffic concerns, fire concerns. I just wanted to, it sounds like the city did.
Yeah.
Hi.
Hi, sorry, you're in the middle of your question, Smedar Boardman, traffic engineer for the city. Uh, yes, so the project does qualify as a small project under the screening criteria that was adopted by the city council, which is in compliance with State Senate Bill 743, which relates to the change in looking at transportation analysis for CEQA purposes. We're moving, which moved us into something called assessing vehicle miles traveled. And so this is considered a small project, because it's presumed to generate fewer than, it's 836 vehicle miles traveled per day as this small project. And the characteristics of this type of residential use is similar to those within that area as well.
Thank you. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments or questions? No?
Motion?
No questions.
Um, I just wanted to make another comment about fire. So as far as fire safety, access is the issue. And the Contra Costa Fire Protection District, which is the expert in this area, has provided us with actual data and information and did an analysis with regard to this, and found that the project did meet the standards for both access and turnaround of fire trucks. I, you know, as someone who left the Oakland Hills fire, driving through the fire, and also lived on Del Heimbray Circle, where the house next to me did catch on fire, and I was like, they're old homes, so they were maybe 10 feet apart. I am very offended by this as a scare tactic. I think it is inappropriate to suggest that any sort of multifamily dwelling or home that is close to each other cannot be made fire safe in some way. I think that the idea that only a single-family home on a very large lot is safe from fire is inaccurate and insupportable. And I can assure you that when the house next door caught on fire, and I was very concerned that my house was gonna catch on fire as well, the Contra Costa Fire Department responded quickly and professionally, and it was actually quite an awesome sight to behold. They know what they're doing. They know how to, to put out fires. That is what they are paid to do. And they did an excellent job at it, and my home was not affected, and nobody was injured. And that's because they had access and ability to turn around. And we've ensured these things in this project through an analysis by the experts in this area. So I don't think it's appropriate for us to eliminate entire area, you know, types of housing on the grounds that there might be a fire that would catch, you know, the neighbor next door. It's not appropriate. It's, um, it's a, it's an unsupported scare tactic, and it's offensive to those of us who've actually, you know, had to live through fires and to support and protect our families through those kind of events. So I, I wanted to make that clear. All right, I think that our, our job here is, is limited, not because our hands are tied, because we're powerless, because we're stupid, or because we have some sort of ethical breach. We have spent a lot of time reviewing the materials that the city staff has given us. We have reviewed developer materials. We have reviewed every single one of your comments that have been submitted to us and written in oral form. We've taken them very seriously. And so I think there are a number of actions that we could take at this time. But I think now I'd like to invite a, um, a motion, if there is one.
I move that we grant the appeal of the Design Review Commission's prior decision and approve the final design review for applications number Y22019. Subject to the additions of approval contained in the draft resolution, attachment 1.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Andy, can you please call the roll?
Can I, excuse me, can we have some comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I did wanna say things.
I appreciate that.
Sure. First of all, just following on the chairman's, uh, chairperson's comments on fire. I've been involved in fire safety issues in this area for over 40 years. Fire safety is a variety of factors. Proximity of homes is one. Landscaping between them is another. The nearest to the wildfire interface is one. But I can tell you that these homes being under current building codes rather than earlier building codes, these homes being fully sprinkled with materials that are more fire resistant than the standards that were used in the past, are very likely the very safest, fire safest homes in this area. I have no doubt about that. The second comment is on the concessions that you brought up. There are a lot of concessions, you know. I read them, and I think that's, wow, that's a lot. But there is state law, and state law says they're able to ask for those, and we are obligated to grant them. So, you know, you could say, yeah, we could, we could, you know, not grant them, but then we wind up in, in court again, and some people say, "Well, take them to court." But the fact is, if you lose, and we would, sorry, shouldn't be giving legal opinions, but I am a lawyer, so. But, you know, it's just, it just doesn't make sense. Plus, it's state law. We ought to follow the law. But as far as, you know, the, the much narrower reason that we're here today is look what the Design Review Commission did, and see whether that was appropriate. And they did, they, I actually called the staff to say, "You left something out," because all I saw was a letter from the Design Review Board, one page, saying, "It's denied." You know, and then there was a response, which was much more detailed. Was there, did I miss something that the Design Review Board put out? And the answer was no. They didn't do several things. Number one, they didn't make the written findings, which are required. They didn't describe the necessary health and safety impacts that were required. And they didn't evaluate or identify mitigations. So they didn't do any of those things that are required in order to do a denial. That's gonna be defensible in court. So, you know, short of trying to do all those things ourselves right now, which I don't think we can, because I think the applicant was correct, we can't make those findings. We can't, um, uh, make those claims of health and safety impacts, because there's very specific requirements for how you have to identify them, and I don't believe it can be done. So there's really very little choice that we have here. And I'm sorry to say that, you know, we, we, I think we do play a role, but in this case, state law trumps what we're doing, or dictates what we're doing. And in this case, I think we're obligated to, um, uh, grant the appeal and approve the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Do we have any other commissioner comments, questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, and I think we're ready to vote.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Needing?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Chair Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I'm going to reopen public comments, so the people that have stayed here can make brief comments. But first, I want to make a comment myself. The Design Review Commission said that they were trying to send us a message through their meeting, and so I am going to send a message back to the Design Review Commission now. First, I'd like to point out that the members of the Planning Commission are all volunteers. We're working to serve our community in the best way that we can, using the talents and gifts that we have to serve our community, and with the parameters of the task that we've been given that are clearly defined. I'm a lawyer. I'm a single mom. I bill by the hour. So the considerable amount of time that I spent this week was spent in service to this community and not serving my clients or making money for myself. And this message has necessitated that the applicant hire counsel and that the commission and city staff spend a considerable amount of time, hours and hours and hours, dealing with this appeal. It was, in my opinion, a necessary and a wasteful use of our community resources to do that. And I am not happy that we had to spend that time doing something that should have been necessary. If you want to send a message to Sacramento, the Planning Commission, to me, the chair of the Planning Commission, the city council, or anybody else that's sitting here, it's really easy. All you have to do is just pick up the phone and call, or write. They'll take your emails. They'll take a letter. There's a number of ways to do it. You don't have to send a message through a unprecedented action at your commission, and I hope that you will not do that again. I'd also like to make a comment regarding the, um, the state of housing in our state and in our city particularly. There is a housing shortage. It's officially an emergency, and it's real. It's not a joke. And we failed to deal with it for decades. We did not take care of business with regard to creating enough housing in our community so that people could live and work in our community in the same place. And so now the legislature is forcing us to deal with it in ways that we might not like specifically, because we didn't deal with it ourselves. From a philosophical standpoint, I find that pretextual denials of lawful applications because we just don't like it, or because people like, not like us, might move in, or because people who live differently than we do might become our neighbors. I think that's wrong. It reflects our own personal biases, and to the extent that we deny our community a rich diversity of people in our community who are all kinds of different people, who do all kinds of different things and live in different ways, we are making our communities less strong, less rich, less diverse, and less successful. When bias is taken further, and it results in discrimination and redlining, it becomes illegal. So we need to be mindful of these decisions that we make that are based on our emotional biases rather than the state law and the policies of the city government that we are, of the community that we live in. I have before, on multiple occasions, stated my commitment, which mirrors the city's policy, to welcoming a diverse population to Walnut Creek, to creating responsible housing at all income levels and price levels, and especially affordable housing, which we're very short of, and which this project does present some, you know, one unit. And also to infill, infill development. I didn't interrupt you while you were speaking, so I would appreciate the same courtesy. Thank you. So I'm also, infill development is a really good idea for a number of reasons. It's environmentally and socially responsible on a number of levels, and so it's something that we should encourage. This project contains all those elements. I'm glad we've reversed the Design Review Commission decision and approved the project. I believe it'll benefit the entire community, even though it does represent a change and may not be something that you had envisioned. So just to reiterate, and this is specifically to the Design Review Commission, next time you wanna send a message, just call, email, or write, please. Okay, thank you for indulging me on that, and at this time, I'd like to reopen public comment, so that.
Maybe you should have just picked up the phone and talked to the Design Review Commission instead of.
Okay, so I'd like to, I'd like, I would like to, at this time. Okay, sir. Sir, we have listened to everybody and all of their comments. Okay. Okay, this is enough. Thank you. You, you need. No, this is enough. My comments were directed to the Design Review Commission, and as I said. Thank you, okay. You can either leave now, or we're gonna have you leave. Thank you. All right, so at this time, I would like to see. Okay, so, if you could please take this out to the lobby, we would appreciate it, so we can continue our business. Thank you. Sir, we have allowed a lot of public comment. We've read everything you've provided. If you could please exit the chambers now, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I need a motion from the commission to allow me to reopen public.
I make a motion. Oh. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Do, we need to vote on this?
Actually, it only requires the consent of the majority of those present.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Nods.
All right. So I think you folks all have cards. If you could maybe just come line up, and we can get this done. I would appreciate it.
Well, hello, chairpersons and council members. Is this thing on? Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Awesome. Sorry about the confusion earlier. We didn't know the process. So what we're here for is a little bit about myself. Professional athlete. I'm a professional BMX rider, action sports athlete. I host action sports and motorsports events around the world. I work with youth, up on the upcoming generation, and I'm an athlete on the Tony Hawk's Secret Skate Park Tour. Also a liaison on skate parks designs, the elements used to do skate parks, and the ability to withstand rollerblades, skateboards, scooters, and bicycle usage inside said skate parks. As a very proud person living in Walnut Creek, I travel the world and get paid to ride my bicycle inside skate parks. The one place I come back home to, there is a law, or suggested law, inside the skate park of Walnut Creek saying, "No bicycles allowed." I travel the world promoting the bicycles, skateboards, BMX, and rollerblades all together in our shows and our demos in sold-out stadiums worldwide. Recently, Gavin Newsom actually updated and revised Senate Bill 1003, and it's nicknamed the "All Wheels Law." By him doing that, that means that everybody, excluding motorized and electric vehicles, are allowed to use skate parks in the state of California. So what we're here to do is trying to see, it seems that where we travel and we do our demos inside these skate parks, a lot of the communities have taken note of the "All Wheels Law," but they haven't updated their signage. So it's sending the mixed messages, and there's a lot of like reverb happening. And we're here kinda to see, what can we do about getting the signage updated so that bicycles are allowed, along with all the other users in the skate park here in Walnut Creek, California? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. I appreciate that. Andy, I think there's some response.
Yes, and actually, Madam Chair, if I may just ask, I'm sorry, sir, what was your name again? Just like.
Jody Donnelly.
Oh, that was you. Okay, great, thank you. Yes, so to, to answer the question, this would be, actually, I spoke with Mr. Correo on the phone a few, couple days ago, and advised that the best point of, best point of contact would actually be our Arts and Rec Department. I'm actually in the process, I haven't heard back yet, trying to find an exact person to put him in touch with, rather than just like, oh, talk to this department. And fortunately, do have his contact information here, and so I'll be happy to follow up with that as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, next up?
Hi, my name is Michael Kohn, and I'm also representing the local bike community. And I grew up in Walnut Creek, and I was ecstatic when the Walnut Creek Skate Park first opened in 2006. But I've paid over $800 in fines for riding my bicycle in the, in the skate park. So it's a, that's a bummer, but, you know, I, I keep going back, because it's one of the best parks in the area. And now that I've gotten older, it's one of the only skate parks in the area that has lights. So it's really a good place to go to ride and get some exercise after work. And it's good for my mental health, and it's good for my peers' mental and physical health as well. So our ask is to please consider putting the, putting this on the agenda item to allow bicycles in the Walnut Creek Skate Park. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I think, as we just stated, I think there's a different commission that's probably, that's best directed to, but we'll, we've, we've directed it to staff, so I think we'll, you'll be in touch. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, so I'm, now I'm closing the second public comment portion of our meeting. The third, but the second open one, which brings us to Agenda Item 5, Commission Considerations. Do we have anything?
No, we don't have any items.
Okay. I, I was hoping we could maybe at some point figure out the new law with regard to remote appearance at hearings for commissioners, and if you could maybe clarify that for us at some point.
Yes, certainly. I'll follow back with that, and I'll get in contact with the city clerk, who knows more about it than I do.
Excellent. All right. I really appreciate that. Do we have any commission member and staff reports or announcements? No? All right, well, then I guess it's time for number seven, adjournment, and we will adjourn this meeting at 7:13. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you very much, everybody.